Okay, I'm going to call to order the January 14th, 6:00 PM work session. Public participation, public input pertaining to agenda items. There's no old business, there's a special bed application, March of Dimes, March for Babies, next April 19th. It's an annual event, scheduled for 19th or 14th, or 7:00 to 9:00 AM. Any questions?
The insurance is the only question I have that I should take here.
Okay. All right, moving on to waste water treatment plant interim loan representation. Mr. Van Ross?
As we've been getting all along, we're positioned to depend on the waste water treatment plant upgrade. Route 14 is interest from the 6,760 is for P O R D and D U B. Engineering work.
Any comments or questions? Sure. What's that? I do, okay, I do. And I have a highlight if you need that.
My question is, does that take us to the end of the pre-bid phase?
As far as payment wise?
Just for that aspect of the treatment plan. The way, just so we can get the breakdown, you know, because we should be done with preliminary design and then final design. Now, this should get us from booking it to the bid phase, correct? This should be the final payment to them before we go to the bid phase, before we owe them any more money, I guess is what I'm saying?
I don't know.
Okay.
That's my assumption too, but I don't swear to God I could tell them that.
I agree.
We should be going to bid, though. My understanding is it's supposed to go to bid by the end of this week, so I'm still keeping my head down.
Okay. So there, he, I guess my thing is, as long as we go to bid by April this week, I'm okay with this. But I don't want to pay him to go to bid if not going to bid, if everything's not in place to get there, I guess is what I'm saying.
My last conversation was that we were definitely ready to go to bid by the end of this week.
Okay.
But I'm hoping that you get told by then.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? That's it. I do, okay, I do. And I have a highlight if you need that.
Cramp. So, I think that's what I was going to ask too, is how close you were to bid, because I only had a conversation here last year.
Now, keep your fingers crossed, according to the engineer, everything will be in everybody's hands and everybody's good to go and on hand and foot, which should be very much.
So, we will see when we get back and see what we're in the first one, if we can pair off any accessories for...
Yeah, my understanding is, I think they got like 30 days before they make closes. Probably about enough 30 days.
Now, we still have to talk about, after that comes down, sort of talk about the fact that we feel decent, but these things are almost never known.
D U B is one we have a concern about, getting done by December 31st.
Okay. The possibility of extension, or is it the labor floor?
Yeah, as long as the construction starts by April, we should make it up there, because they're figuring nine months for construction.
I know there's concern that we're ahead.
Okay. All right. Nothing else? Moving on. To drafting agenda. My agenda is all working out. The bill is 12/19, 12/31, 1-9. The old business, second reading, ordinance number 10, 2013. Article 191, two pio, recreation fees. Second reading, ordinance number 11, 2013, the airport authority membership reduction. And then the new business, resolution number 1 of 2014, the trail town phase one plan, funding shade tree resignation, the shade tree reappointment, the shade tree associate members, member approvals, and the city council representative approvals. And also, the special bed and the interim loan representation. Yeah, correct, thank you. Public input. This is the point where we go into the mayor and the council comments. This week has been a frustrating week for me. It was brought to my attention by council people. When I'm speaking, I'm not going to embarrass anyone, because there is no embarrassing, but I won't, I won't be putting out the names. But it was brought to my attention, for all of our attention, actually council's attention since West End. In light of things that's been going over at the Leisure Service Commission, and you have Leisure Service, I am on their board. I accept there as a president, not as your mayor, not as your leader. Just recently, I'm sure most of you have read in the paper that Mr. John R. Smith was, there's been a couple of things in the press that read that he was hired as a director, and I think someone, another article might have said he was put in as, I'm not sure, there was something else that was written, but I did read that someone brought it to my attention. However, I was told that a couple of council people said there's something sneaky hasn't occurred. Voices on the phone have said, are you kidding me? Did the mayor really hire her father-in-law? She's out of control. Why did we not know about this? Was this opportunity/job offer advertised or extended to the public? And also, there was a local internet news show, The Street, the show that go in a good 15 to 17 minutes of airtime discussing the perception of a priority concern in the fact that the mayor hired her own father-in-law to head the Travel Pleasure Service Commission. And that part, I can't testify to either, because I did not see that either. I would like to know if that is, if that, when that took place, not yet, because I believe that, but when that took place. And also, why is the mayor not available for comment yet again? Well, let me explain one thing there to you. Your mayor wasn't available for comment last week, because your mayor was very, very sick for about nine days. At no time did my phone ring. At no time did I pick up my phone, or did I get to, was I able to get to the phone? If it rang, there was no answering, nobody left a message on my machine, at no time. So, if somebody calls me and they leave a message on my machine, I can promise you one thing, I'll call you back. If I can't, I can promise you this, as a president of that board, I'll have a member call you. Last week into this week, I was unavailable. I did work a little bit, but I'm still unavailable, and I'd hate to go and see what those haircuts are going to look like in about another four or five weeks. Another thing is, the numerous people asked why the mayor and the commission put her relative in a position of authority at Leisure Service. Well, mayors involved made aware of what was happening when this changed. Now, I'm going to explain to everyone here what the process was. First of all, though, I want to apologize to my fellow Leisure Service Commission members, Mr. Ron Lytle, Evelyn Delman, Steve Kramer, Penny Lindstedt, Joe Anderson, Tom Lane, for having to give this statement, as they fully intended and wanted to give it in their regular commission meeting. It's going to be tomorrow night, I'd welcome all of you to attend our commission meeting, at 6:30 PM. With saying that, I will tell you that there is very, very few, there have been very few meetings that we've had that there's been anyone there, with the exception of my husband, John B. Smith. He has been about the only attendee at that meeting. So, at any time, could anyone know what was happening at Leisure Service, because they attend the meetings? So, we need to put responsibility back where it really belongs, and it's all getting bought. I hate having to give this, I hate to have to give this report tonight, because I would like for them to have done that. First, I go to address, to the best of my recollection, exactly what transpired with the hiring process of the Director of Leasures, of the Director of Leasures. Mr. Van Ross? Mr. Van Ross has been, or manager, has been attending every one of those meetings. To my knowledge, you've been to every meeting. Never has the mayor, or never has the councilwoman Esther Smith, and never has the commission, a commission member slash president ever made, forced, Mr. Van Ross to go to any of our meetings. I am appreciative that he's been to our meetings, because now I have him, and I am going to ask you, Larry, under no circumstances that you lie for me. I want, I am asking for you to tell it like it is, as I go down through what I'm going to talk about, and I want you to, at any time that I say something that is either a lie, or, or if I speak wrong and humanly make a mistake, I would ask that you would please, please stop me and make that correction. And I'm going to ask, and not only ask, but demanding you, if at any point that I rely, I'm going to ask you to let every person sitting in this audience know that I lie.
I will, if you order anything.
Thank you very much. All right. September 19th, the Director of Mike Rice was no longer with Leasures. The board asked Mr. Kyle Menew, then the Assistant Director, if he wanted, and also if he felt that he could fill the Director's position. He said that he could. Not exactly sure of the date, sometime in November, early December, Kyle either stopped into my business, or called me to say he was so overwhelmed that he could no longer do the Director's job. He stated he wanted to go back to doing what he was doing before, handling the sports and the programs. I immediately, and when I say I immediately, I did immediately walk away from my client's head to put an email out, but I put an email out immediately to all the commission members. At our next meeting, after much discussion, and I'm not sure who said to tell anyone or everyone, whether family members, family, or friends, if they would be interested in applying for that Director's position, to send us the resumes. I have no idea who said that. We were all in a full discussion, because we were desperate to find someone to get in there, to be in that position. Also, for them to tell anyone, if they knew of anybody that would be interested, to have them send in their resumes. We also had the resumes to go over when we initially advertised for the Director. To my knowledge, every commission member stated they did not want to go through the interview process again. As I said, to my knowledge, I don't remember one of them. As a commission member, I have taken my job. As a commission member, the president, I was on the board prior. I have seen the fiscal irresponsibilities that took place within the four walls of that institution. I have witnessed it. And I made a promise, first of all, to God almighty, that I would stand, I would expose, I don't care what I had to do, I was going to do what was right for the citizens of this community. And I took my job, and I take my job very, very seriously. I asked, so to that process, I need to backtrack a second, so to that process, I started asking individuals, I asked business owners, if they knew anybody reputable they could recommend. I asked clients if they knew of anyone. From all the individuals I spoke with, I received two resumes. Now, this is what I feel bad for having to do, but I'm going to do it tonight. I contacted our solicitors to make sure that I was within my legal rights to do this. I'm going to reprint names out tonight, I am not, and this is, it's not a bad thing, but I have to put our names out tonight, because I'm going to let you know who I spoke to put credibility to what I'm saying. I remember talking with a Mrs. Whitman, Sandy Whitman, a few months prior to all of this taking place. She was saying that her husband retired. When all of this took place, I remembered what she had said to me, so I called her, and I asked her if he, her husband's name is Dana Whitman, I'm going to put a good punch in for the title, Three Methodist Church, a wonderful church. This gentleman's name is Dana Whitman, a godly man. He exemplifies, in my opinion, the qualities of a good leader. I called, after I remembered what she said, I called and talked to Sandy, but I never received a call back. And I know they were busy, and I'm sure they didn't have the opportunity to do me a call back. However, however, that Dana being a retiree prompted a thought, and I'm not sure if I called Mr. Steve Kramer, he's on the commission, or if I ran into him, but I said, Stephen, I think we've been thinking wrong, forgive me your thoughts. Number one, I thought, I said, I think we need to be looking for someone that has owned a successful business, or has successful business experience, someone that knows how to make money. We, Mr. Brawley and I sat in the ad hoc, on the ad hoc committee, representing art of the city, and also the school representatives, and we were and are, and I'm still telling them, that the commission, to the commission, that their goal is to try to become self-supported. So, with that, I was thinking of the, I was thinking of this, and my mind just drew a blank there, there was one word that left me. I was thinking that the individual needs to be successful, or have business experience. And then also, someone retired that is not looking for a career, that will address the past irresponsibility, irresponsible, irresponsible what? Thank you. Thank you. Someone with kindness and patience, that can mentor Kyle for the possibility of one day being that Director. And Steve Kramer said to me, oh my goodness, Esther, I never thought of that, that's exactly what we need. After that, I made phone calls. I called Bob Joyce, he was a former owner of Savage Direct, and I said to Bob, I said, Bob, we're looking for a Director. And I said, I know you're retired, and jokingly, I said, I know I'm not asking you, but would you be interested? And he starts laughing, and I said, I really want to call for, is, would you know of anybody that you could suggest? And he said at that time, wow, Esther, that's a, that's a big question. He said, would you mind giving me a little bit of time? He threw out a name, because I did put him on the spot, he threw out a name, the name was Brian Gates. I knew of this gentleman just as a midget, I really don't know him. I called Mr. Gates, and I said, we're looking for a Director, would you, would you want to put your resume in? He said, you had to think about it, and then after a while, it was, that didn't happen. I met with Brett Johnson, he was not interested, but he gave me two names. One name was Mr. Terry Funk, and he had just retired as the principal Main Street School. I did not call him, because I figured that that was something he wouldn't be interested in, because he just retired. I thought of Mr. Corb Bayless, however, he was in Florida. I talked with Corb Bayless, when he was home, and Corb was retired. I thought of him. I thought of Mr., there was a gentleman Smith, another Smith, amazing, how many Smiths crop up, that owned the jewelry store, retired. I took, and every name that I mentioned, I took to the commission. I ran into Councilman Brawley one morning. He said, and I quote, I know who the perfect person would be. That gentleman's name is John Brawley. And I said, oh my goodness, you are absolutely right, you'd be perfect, because he would be an excellent leader. And I would back that 110%. I don't care if it was a relative or if it isn't, a good man. I called John, however, he was not interested, he has a job. Commission member Penny, Penny Lindstedt called me, saying that maybe her daughter would be interested. I told her, if she was anything like Penny, I would vote for her in a heartbeat. Penny is the hardest-working woman next to Esther Smith. And I'm not necessarily talking about myself, I'm sure there's none that I'm there, I'm just joking there. She's one of the hardest-working women, and it's an honor and a privilege to set aside that girl in that commission, on that commission. I would have hired her daughter in a heartbeat. Penny is such an asset to that commission. Commission member Joe Anderson said at one point that he would, he would ask his mother. He did, and she wasn't interested, because she's busy, she's working. I also brought it to all council, with the exception of Mr. Brawley, because he wasn't at a meeting. He missed a few of our meetings last year, just joking.
He did, actually.
I mean, no, I'm teasing, I mean, I know he did, but I had to, I figured he'd say something. But, he wasn't at a meeting. I brought it to every one of the council, Councilman Reese at the time made mention that he had a friend, and that he might be possible, he might possibly be interested, and I told him, give his resume to us. So, to that, we had our meeting in December. Commission member Evelyn Delman brought one resume. Commission member Ron Lytle said that the school administration threw out two names, one was Mr. Funk, and one was Commission member Tom Lane. I turned and I asked Penny if her daughter was interested, and she wasn't, because she had a family, she has a family. And I also said, I also brought all these, the names that I just said, and I also brought my father-in-law, John Smith. This is where Larry will have to help me, remember a few things. I had contacted Larry when I was, when I was thinking, when I talked to Steve about retiree. I met, I read, I went to see Larry, and I said, Larry, I said, what do you think? And at that point, he said to me, you know, Esther, I know who the perfect person would be. I said, okay. He said, your husband. And I said, you're absolutely right, John could be fantastic, but I had no way, no way would have brought a meeting, I would never have done that. And I don't know, through the course of conversation, we were talking, and somehow that came up, and I said, oh my goodness, John Smith would have been, would be perfect. That happened to be a week, a week from the end of deer season, it was on Friday, I had taken a half a day off to go hunting with my husband and my father-in-law. And I drove up there, and I didn't get any hunting in. Well, I did, yes, I did, I take that back, that's not true, I got about an hour and a half hunting it. And I said, John, is this something you'd be interested in? I could take that to the board. And he said, let me think about it. I then, we had our meeting, I took all these names to the board. There was one time I aired, and I'm going to tell you what took place, that I made a mistake. I was on the phone a week before all this took place, I had to call Mr. Ron Lytle. We had been dealing with some problems in the, on the commission, and there has been some legal issues, and I had to contact him about a, an issue. And I happened to say, now, my father-in-law has moved to this area, he's been here forever, I don't know, he moved away for a period of time, he's been back, he's back. And the meeting that we had, we had a council meeting, and it was on a Tuesday. The following, the same night, we had a commission meeting. I hurried to get this meeting done, to go over to the commission meeting. So, before that meeting, I had this conversation with Brawley. John invited his dad to come to a council meeting. I didn't think anything of him. And... And I happened to make mention to Ron about John coming to the meeting. And I said, "And we're going, I have to run over to, so get done with this meeting and get over to that other meeting." And I said, "And John will be with us." And then I, and it dawned on me, "No, I'm not. I'm going to ask John not to go." And I made mention to Ron Lytle. And Ron said, "Why wouldn't you? That way, if the commission members are wanting to interview him, he'd be in the meeting." My only wrongdoing in everything. Sorry, John. Do not print that I have tears or wanting to cry. Please. My only wrongdoing was to say to my husband, "Share your dad with us at a meeting." And I should have said, "No." But I listened, and I called Mr. Lytle. He did nothing wrong. The wrongdoing, if any wrongdoing, was Esther Smith by saying, "No," Mr. John Smith. But he didn't know. He had no idea when he walked into that meeting that he was going to be approached at all. Now, I must say again, after our meeting, we went into a discussion. And I went down through every name. I went down through all the resumes. The business owner that brought in two resumes, I gave them to the board. We had the opportunity. Everyone was. Looked at every one of them. I happened to make mention, when I made mention of John, I cannot tell you at that point. I don't know when, if it was in that meeting or a meeting prior. I can't tell you that. That I made mention about what I thought of retiree, someone with businesses experience. But it was at that point that I did tell them because when they saw the resume, they were all interested. We brought John back in there, interviewed him. And two of them immediately said, Mr. Kreiner, I think it was Mr. Kreiner and Mr. Joe, answers, "When do you start?" I know, at that point, I stepped back. I stepped back prior. I at least let them know he was there if they wanted to talk to him. He was there. He had actually left. My husband always waits for me in the foyer of that building. So he was out sitting in the foyer of the building, not waiting for an interview, but waiting for me to get done with the meeting so he could go home. So I put my father-in-law in an awkward position. That is my mistake. And that's the only mistake. For I feel there was no wrong. There was no misleading. There was nothing, nothing on my part. Nothing. The only, the only problem, some people may look at it as a problem, is I've sat on that commission, I have been on the City Council section since I've sat on that commission, or the board, I'm sorry, the board, for two-plus years, or longer, actually. And I have such a heart for leisure service. I have had serious issues with seeing literally hundreds of thousands of dollars of hard-earned taxpayers squandered. I've had a really tough time seeing thousands of dollars of food wasted, thrown away. I have had a hard time looking at $418,000 renovation to a swimming pool that could, that could have been in a whole lot better shape today than what it is. But things have done properly. I want to do everything I can, everything I can, to bring back our leisures. I want to bring it back as your mayor, as your leader. I want to bring it back as a citizen and as a commission member. I sat on there as a president. A lot of people have felt that I was wrong of myself in there. They say I said to put myself in there as a president. I didn't put myself in there. I knew that I had knowledge. When I was nominated, I knew I was going to take it to help five volunteers that knew nothing about what was taking place in the four poles of leisure service. I feel, I feel responsible. And I feel bad for our commission members. I want to tell you, those people have put hours, hours and days into meetings at that place, not because they want to pad their resume, because they care about that community and they care about that entity. I don't mind taking the heat. I don't mind getting slammed. I always say, and I've always said, "If God doesn't defend me, I ain't worth defending. Be the defender." But I will defend my people. If this God quietly, if we quietly installed a new executive director, then blame me. Don't blame the commission. I will tell you one thing. Never once, never once has there not been transparency. Never. Because I believe in open and being honest. The only thing I will say, I'm going to close it up. The only thing I'm going to say. For a long time, I'm sure every community has a group of people or people. I say, I don't say group, but there's a people that will forever try to throw hurt, negative on truths. And I, but I tell you folks, I encourage every one of them. Don't listen to them. My door has always been open. My phone has always been, the ring's off the wall. Never once do I stand in my, in my exelon, in my business, trying to undermine, trying to hurt. But as your mayor, I will tell you, I will encourage you. We need to build what it has. We do not need to destroy it. And if at any time, any, any council members, anytime you have a problem, I encourage you all to bring them out so we can talk about them. Tomorrow night, we will have our meeting at Leisure Services. There's been a lot of things that is, that my father-in-law has heard. I hope, I hope it doesn't cause him to step down because he's an innocent individual. He doesn't deserve, doesn't deserve any of this stuff. If this stuff is being said, he doesn't deserve it. I tried to live, and I'm trying to live. I've tried to live, and I'm trying to live to do others as they would do in the real. I am proud to be your leader. I'm really, I'm proud to be your leader. I'm proud to be on that commission. I'm proud to be on that commission. So I want to say, I just want to thank everybody for being here. I want to thank, I want to thank my, I want to thank Larry. Larry's been a real asset. Larry has worked extremely hard there. And I want to thank Larry. And I want to thank my fellow councilmen. If you have any questions tonight, please, or any comments, please ask them tonight. I'll do my very best to answer, answer your concerns. Don J., or Jay, I'm sorry.
Keith, Keith.
Yeah. I missed him.
Let me be the first to say, thanks for your explanation. I appreciate it. And I will, I will tell you, and I think everybody here will agree with me, is that there's no, certainly no question whatsoever about your compassion or belief search. I'll be the first one to say. I understand you. I want to talk a little bit about the community because the mayor referred to some questions early on in her presentation tonight. And it had to do with people calling in. I took some of those phone calls. And I want to defend the community just a little bit. Those phone calls did come in. I took them in. I've had people stop me on the street and ask me questions. And I get attention. They're all fair questions. But one thing I do want to say, Diane and I talked about this a couple days ago. People, even though they call and they say things, they never show up at meetings, do they? We know that. Maybe that's because we live in a world where they call, they text, they put things on Facebook. But I think we all agree that the very last thing they do is show up at meetings and tell you their concerns about them. They'd rather tell somebody on the street. They'd rather tell somebody on City Council. So the comments are there. And I'm one of these guys that thinks that we ought to address it. If the community is concerned about, then we ought to certainly address it. So a lot of times they call. A lot of times we'll have hot button issues, what we call hot button issues, which you look out there and the gallery's empty. It's no different over the Leisure Services Commission. So you hear a lot of stuff out on the street, but nobody ever shows up. You know what? It doesn't mean that they don't care. It doesn't mean that they still have concerns. And I think, Mayor, obviously, they will appreciate your response and your answers as to some of those questions. I know I do. With regard to the directorship and the questions that were asked to me, I think probably one of the questions is, I heard the most is, "Why don't we go back to the community if you're having a hard time filling a position within the leisure services?" The overall resounding question I heard was this. "Why don't we seek someone that's already in the career field?" And that's a fair question. And maybe you guys can answer that question. It's not just a resounding question, but it's a reasonable question. Why don't we go for someone in the career field? Because with the many tasks that Leisure Services has in front of them, I would think that we wouldn't worry, not have to worry about someone knowing the job. So if whoever's in the driver's seat or they have a grasp on parts and wrecks, and they knew the ins and outs of parts and wrecks, they could focus on the serious problems that we have when we turn around.
Keith, and I'd like to interject in that. We did advertise initially. And we, if I recall, and I, I'm, I could have said, we received approximately, I'm missing, 30 applications. You can only advertise, you can advertise, we did, I don't even know how long we advertised. We still, that's all we got. You can't allow, keep begging for, you can't beg for them. You can't, you can only advertise if that's all you can do. That's all we get. That's all we have. So we did our due process.
Okay. Well, I'll just start with that. I'm just telling you that the questions were real. They're reality. I'm not the only one on council that had questions. Is that okay? And they're fair questions. The community asked a question. They have a good answer. And so once again, thanks for your explanation. I appreciate it.
I had people asking questions as well on the long, in the same line as Keith. I think the mayor did a great job explaining what went on and how the person's paid. Personally, I don't see any inferiority with it. If that's the way that the commission decided to do it, then that's the way it was decided to be done. You know, like, like Mary said, if you advertise for a job and you only get a handful at some point, do you discourage with trying to fill that position again in such a short period of time with the problems that have been going on down there? You know, I just hope that now that these people You know, I just hope that now that these people have some answers to their questions, that Leisure Services can get back to where it needs to be. Hopefully Kyle can get his legs under down there and maybe take that over at some point. But other than that, I think everything's on the up and up. I would say as well, I just think people need to be here in the open to know what was happening. People assume a lot more than they should at times, and I think they got their answers. So thank you.
You're welcome. Don?
I look at this as, I still have some disappointment in the whole process that took place. One, yes, you are the mayor. Two, you are the president-elect, Mayor. If I was approached as a council of this issue, I would say that this is not a city issue, a council issue. This is a leisure commission issue. And that's where it should have been directed to. Instead of you having to explain at a City Council meeting, I think that was totally unfair to you, for people to say, and think of these types of things, to take and question your integrity. I have known you very, for a very long time. I've known Mr. Buckall for a very long time. And I get very upset when people start running the denigration that I have seen and heard the other council about them. The negativity needs to stop. I'll tell you right now, if you can look in that mirror, and maybe with an open mind, a lot of people do some soul searching. Mayor Smith, it is truly my honor to serve with you on any board of the Commission.
I guess my own comment is, I mean, you know, we get questions from citizens. I guess normally, there's some key things, you know, like how can the mayor hire her own father-in-law? And, you know, I would not forget that it was a Commission, so, on the board, one does not make all decisions. And certainly, City Council, as well as the Facebook area school district, or at least for mental, in selecting every individual is all that. And I believe that there's some citizens who are selected. So there's kind of some key buzzwords that perhaps we should really take a look at the questions that are being answered, asked. Maybe people will just react to it, if you will, just based on those kinds of things. And I guess the question of, you know, a person's integrity, knowing each and every one here basically on City Council, as well as the Commission, that ought to give a person a proof of thought in terms of what they're hearing. I have to lose support as the mayor. I think we're getting in a very direction with Leisure Services, and I look forward to that continuing.
Is there anything that you would like to say about anything that took place? Or you want to add anything to this?
How I, I try to stay neutral on these types of things because I do work for all five, as well as the citizens of this town. Everything you said was true, to the best of my knowledge. The only thing is, when we were discussing hiring your husband, that was a joke. I said, you know, he's the kind of guy we need. It wasn't I who was suggesting that we hire John.
Well, I knew, when I say humanly, speaking, it was intentional to tell me. But I knew, right, because we were in such a discussion, and I knew John was the best man for the job. I knew it.
And I still think John would make a great worker. But that was, not that I was intending to applaud him, like, you know.
Oh, no, 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 he did, he would be the man for the job, that's what we were saying. He would be the man for the job. And I know he would be, but, no, I wouldn't, I know that, I didn't imply that.
As a whole, I think we've got a council there that can work together. And I'm personally looking forward to moving the town forward.
Sure.
You take it, Don.
I do, I do want to say one other thing, that Don said something that made me think of this. I was approached by several people, and I got to tell you, I don't think they came to the wrong place. I understand that it's Leisure Services' question. But the two principal investors in this company are the district and the city. They play a major role in this operation. So I think they did the right thing by coming to this, to that. Thanks. We charged the Commission. Next statement is, next statement. And so we cannot undermine their authority. Right, I'll try to state the obvious, they did the right thing by coming to a council. I don't have a problem on the council, I was just worried we needed to direct them to. And I understand that as you went along, you had your energy process from where you originally started out. And you, as the board members, realize that you needed to change the direction of what you were looking for because you have a massive amount of fund reason, because in four years now, you will be on your own. You will have to take in bees standing there by yourself and getting them, okay? And the city will still take and provide the parks and things that count for you. But as far as funding, the current funding is not going either. And I can understand why your direction would have changed. Because I'll tell you, as a citizen, Mr. Adelman and I have both attended many of those leisure service meetings. And we saw, right, an individual's amount that they were struggling, and he needed help. And I think that you made the right decision.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Well, folks, I want to thank the community, the evening, the last.